I'd like to begin the Planning Board meeting Thursday, January 9th with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have an agenda. Do we have minutes to approve?
Yep. Cooper had finished the minutes, Jock minutes, for December 12th. We have one correction that Darryl pointed out that we're happy to make.
Any other comments?
Actually, if you want to hand those down to Cooper.
Yeah, I have several typo mistakes, but I can deal with that later if you want.
Yeah, if you just share those with us.
Do we have any substantive comments? Would you like to approve the minutes, assuming these typographical and radical mistakes? Or do you want to save it for next meeting?
I just have one comment that Darryl had actually mentioned the last time. So when we were talking about affordable dwelling units, Darryl said that he thought I said that ADUs would help with the affordable housing issue, based on the notes. Apparently, I did say affordable, but I would just like to redact that. I do know that affordable, excuse me, that
That ADUs.
ADUs will be helpful for the housing crisis issue, not affordable housing. So I would just make that a clarification.
Create more housing.
Yeah, create more housing, in general, not affordable housing, yes.
Yeah, we can make sure that clarification is
Thank you.
So, once again, do we want to approve the minutes with these corrections? Did you want to wait?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as they will be edited.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item, bills. Any bills today?
No.
Okay. Next item, and I'm sort of trying to move this along because we have a sort of a packed meeting tonight. Member input and member update on projects. Northern Bank is under construction. My house is shaking in the morning when they begin work. 12 Robinson Road, Mr. Cataldo is in the room, and that's wrapping up?
Pretty much done.
Yeah. And he gave a tour this weekend, which is very impressive, the result.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to invite the other board members that haven't been able to go. Certainly, I can talk with Anna, Darren, and Mark, and Maron, as you all have been a big part of helping us get it underway.
Okay.
So we'll just try to arrange a time that works for everyone.
Are we interested? I think you should be. It's really impressive. Okay. So we'll try to get something going. We have not done anything. We made one, the next item is town newsletter, and we have done one thing. Should we, I'm thinking with upcoming issues, maybe should we do something on ADUs or some kind of?
So ADUs, I would recommend we wait a little while. The state's going to issue, draft a model bylaw, probably early February.
Okay. Do we have any suggestions for Planning Board input to the town newsletter? I mean, we may have something after tonight's meeting to talk about. Okay, but let's keep that in our heads about potential items. 245 Foster Street, is there anything going on with that?
No, no updates.
95 Taylor Street.
95 Taylor Street, yeah, if I could ask the board to vote on the, signing the tri-party agreement and the associated cash bond agreement.
Okay, this meeting?
Yeah, and there was recommended wording on the cover page. So I'll open that so you can see it. Should be up.
So we're doing them one at a time.
So I have in the cover page, we need a motion. It says move that the Planning Board approve and sign the updated tri-party agreement for partial security for the Strawberry Farms development at 95 Taylor Street, and further move that the Planning Board approve and to authorize signature of the Planning Board Chair on the security agreement for deposit of money for partial security for the Strawberry Farms development at 95 Taylor Street. Can I have a motion on that? Or do we have any discussion that we need to do?
I think my only question was why the two forms of bond, because I don't think we've ever seen that.
Yep, and it did cause some confusion and added to the process on staff side. Basically, it's up to the developer to ask to put whatever bond in place, whatever types of bond in place that they care to. We were able to work through getting two different types in place. The third type would have taken even more coordination. Developer didn't want to wait for that process.
So it is at the request of the developer?
Correct.
And we're confident and comfortable with the language that's in the documents and the other parts there, that the bond is secure the way we need it?
Yes, thanks for the question. Town Council, Chris Heap, was working with me as recently as last week on the final wording, and he is comfortable with it now.
Just from an historical perspective, we used to just take cash. Now we're getting both, the tri-party agreement, which we've used in the past, and cash. Why he's doing both just made it a little more difficult.
Yep. Can I have a motion?
So moves per the
Just say so moved.
So moved.
Yeah. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And the paperwork is there for your signature in one case and the board's signature in the other case.
Okay. Next. Potential zoning bylaw amendments for May 2020, five-town meeting. We have the ADU issue, and we need to sort of map out what hearings we want to have in the spring, starting in February. Flood plane bylaw and map update, marijuana cultivation facilities bylaw update. Then there's, items four and five are not necessarily, well, we'll bring them up. I guess the question is, can we do an ADU bylaw proposal for May-town meeting? This is, this new state law has excited a lot of people who want to develop, and I'm not sure that we should wait for fall. That's my feeling. Whether we can do it or not, I don't know.
I was going to say, part of it depends on what's the state's timeline for giving us a model bylaw, because I don't think we ought to invent our own and then wait until the state come out with one.
Absolutely. Maron just mentioned that they want it some three or four weeks from now.
The latest that I've heard is they expect to issue a model bylaw early in February. One of the, let me take off on a little bit of a tangent. One of the questions for the town to consider is whether or not you also want to restrict the use of ADUs for short-term rentals. Cooper identified, what, three, four questions that we could do a brief survey, get at least some data points from residents on how they would like to address that.
Which is, I think, did you lay that out on one of the cover sheets?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, should we, let's talk about this now. So I have a couple of comments in addition to that. There are other aspects to the new law which will affect our town, and that is, in an effort to create more housing, they want to basically allow the building of modest homes on what are presently considered unbuildable lots. So, for instance, there, if a lot has 75-foot frontage, 10,000 square feet, as a right, you should be able to build an 1,850-square-foot, three-bedroom home. This does have some impact on some of our neighborhoods. I am sort of interested in opening a hearing on the ADU issues because of things like this, just to get the word out to people what's going on. The other thing that really is a big change is that there's no owner occupancy required anymore. So literally, new homes can be developed with an ADU and sold, and that's what the state is mandating. But I think we all need to come to an understanding of the ramifications of, I work with developers, and there are developers already talking about doing this. So essentially, it makes legal two families in any case, subject to, you know, septic and setbacks and, you know, this and that and the other thing. So
I think, just to clarify, I think the difference between a two-family in terms of how it's deeded versus a single-family house with an ADU, which I think we'd keep as a single deed and not a separate ownership.
There's no provision to keep it as a single deed. It could be condoed.
Yeah, and I think what will help is when
I think we need clarification on that.
When the state issues their final guidelines, hopefully, we'll have some clarification.
I don't think it's going to work out that way.
Whether ownership is part of the question.
Well, access is going to be definitely an issue in septic.
Right, right.
Yeah, there are other limitations, but in terms of form of ownership and the physical aspects. And then the other issue is, is there any neighbor input design review provisions? So, there's a lot, it's not just a simple model bylaw thing. I think we need to sort of understand what's going on.
I think that's why I don't, I know you want to try to do it as quick as possible, but unless the Governor's Office gives us a phenomenal blueprint on this, which I don't, I have my doubts whether we get one, that's a lot we're going to have to go through between now. We're not going to get it till February, where you got March and April to kind of set
Well, we could open a hearing in February.
We could.
And then if we don't have the info, we can
Well, no, we have to have a draft bylaw filed with town clerk in order to schedule the hearing.
Then we can't do it in February.
Right. For this one, we cannot.
But I urge you all to, you know, pick up information, talk to people, get their concerns, and, you know, it's sort of simple, but monumental.
That's a lot of offshoots, yeah.
Got a lot of moving parts.
Okay.
And so the one thing we might be able to get ahead of a little bit is just asking for input on short-term rentals.
I think that's an excellent idea. I mean, what do we feel about that? Did you look at the cover sheet? There were some questions that were laid out. Public outreach, there's a public outreach plan. Did we, does anyone have any comments on that?
We could put a paragraph in the town newsletter.
Yeah.
Oh, that's a good idea.
I was going to circle around backwards, is the things that we are planning to discuss as public hearings, we probably ought to put into the newsletter, that these are the major activities of the board coming up, so that people are, if they're reading the town newsletter, give a heads up that we're talking about these things here.
So, could we prepare a newsletter item with this? And, I mean, I think in general, I like the proactive, proactivity of trying to
So then we should have it on February, just for the discussion of the questions.
I think so. I think that we can open it and push it down the road, but there's a lot of different pieces of it, and people are already coming to me with comments and ideas and, so
Right, certainly, it can be on the agenda, but
Yeah, I think we'll come to having on the agenda for discussion, not scheduling it as a hearing.
Public hearing, yeah. Okay.
Well, Maron says we can't have it as a hearing, so, okay. So, is that sufficient for your purposes?
Thank you. I appreciate the direction on that.
I just wanted to add one thing. I was, and maybe it would include it, but I think it'd be useful, is, short-term rental is defined as 31 days or less. We probably ought to put the definition in so that people know what kind of times I'm met that's referring to.
Flood plane bylaw and map update. Now, we should open a hearing on that, shouldn't we?
Yes, eventually we'll need to. The state has issued a model bylaw that's quite simple. Town Council just today sent me a draft. I will work with Jenny Merrill, Town Council, on my recommendations for that draft, run it by Building Department, and then bring a proposal to you, bring the draft to you for February, so that you, later in maybe March, you can schedule that public hearing.
Okay. Once again, I'm, you know, I really want to push this stuff along because March and April become really rapid.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I'm just going to touch one thing. I was trying to look at the maps that they gave. Is there one that just gives a simple overlay that's colored of where the changes are versus the two maps? And can we get one prepared? How's that, if there one that doesn't exist? So that'd be more consumable?
Right, so the best we can do, right, the best we can do is give you the link to the FEMA website that has the map that you're talking about, that shows the changes in various covers, where it's an increase or a decrease. So they do have that.
Because the one I saw was today and the new one.
Right.
Not one that showed me what changed.
Right, right. And FEMA, on their website, they do have one that shows the change. The problem is, we can't import that information to our GIS, so you can't see both the lotlines and the changes, but you do, we will be, we'll share the best information that we have.
Would it be possible to do screenshots and then send those to us as PDFs?
Of the entire town, you wouldn't get the detail that you need.
Okay.
So we will, we're working very hard on showing the best information that we can, understanding that we also, from a zoning perspective, we also have to meet the requirements for zoning bylaw update that include map and have an eight-and-a-half by 11 that's filed with town clerk. Of course, at that scale, it's not particularly eligible, but
Okay.
Get our arms around all of it.
So like the ADU, we're waiting for the model bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Marijuana cultivation facilities bylaw update. At the last meeting, I think the board indicated we want to go forward with the next and final step, which would, for all intents and purposes, as I understand it, limit the remaining, we cannot limit medical cultivation, but it would limit the remaining two types of cultivation that are, were not affected by our last bylaw. It would also require a ballot on or before or after, around, you know, sometime around the town meeting. That would need to be coordinated with the Select Board and hopefully with their approval. My feeling about this is that while we have achieved a fair amount of constriction of the potential cultivation in town, there are many people in town who would like us to take this next step, and they deserve an effort, whether it succeeds or not. So what would be the strategy of opening a hearing on that? Because we have the bylaw.
Right, we have a draft bylaw from Town Council that was shared with you, and the next step is for the board to vote to schedule the public hearing, and you could schedule that as early as the February 6th meeting.
I, yeah, I know, I'm trying to push all these hearings. I think we need to push this hearing so it can be put aside and achieved, and we can coordinate, if at all, with the Board of Select. Could I have a vote on, I being supporting scheduling the public hearing for February on this matter?
I'll make a motion that we put this on February's agenda to, in an effort to put it on for spring town meeting.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Clarification, are you looking for the hearing to open on February 6th?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
And we'll all look at the, so you'll file the potential bylaw with the town clerk. We will all look at it, and we'll go from there.
Put it on the website, too?
Yeah, I was going to say, add a couple of things there. Since we just agreed to that, that would be another thing we ought to include in the inputs to the town newsletter.
Oh, okay, yeah.
But the other part is, is it looks like we have two parts in the thing there. One is an administrative correction, adding MCT to a, to two of the sentences. I want to make sure that that's separated and clearly distinct from the discussion about the number of sites. So we actually have, we'll probably have two articles for, two changes for the, two separate changes for the bylaw.
Right, thank you. The way to approach that is one public hearing, and then you can split that to, for all of the zoning bylaw amendments that deal with the marijuana bylaw, and then you can break that into as many or as few warrant articles as needed. So you do one public hearing.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that we're on track, that those are two sep, totally distinct, going to be votes that they are, and it's situated such that with, however we file it with the town clerk, we're consistent with that.
Correct. Yep.
Okay, next, there's been, we're talk, the item four, inquiry on rezoning 208 and 210 Gray Road from residential to village common. These are two lots that are next to, between the daycare center and the center of town. And this is just an inquiry. However, I think it's good to get whatever we decide on the record. I know, my personal feeling is, is it doesn't, doesn't conform with the master plan's stated purpose of trying to maintain in some way a low density along that part of the road. Village Common would allow a greater density of development. Anyone else have comments?
I don't like it because there's residential between it as well. You know, it's been residential all along. We built a house there, and now the lots that are beside it should stay residential, where you'd have, you shouldn't have village common or commercial with residential all around it.
Okay.
I thought the village district ended at where the commercial district ended at this point.
Yes.
So this is not part of the commercial district, so why would we be putting it into the commercial district?
I agree. I don't think we should be.
Especially as a spot thing. I mean, if we're talking about rezoning all of Great Road, that's a different discussion, but one single lot
Well, there's, it's two lots, but
I'm just looking at the picture.
Yes, it's, yes.
About two acres, so it's not very big.
It doesn't seem to fit.
But, you know, the reason why I want to have this discussion in a, in an open meeting is so that this is on the record of intentions. Anna, do you have any comments?
No, I would agree that, I mean, I don't believe it should be done. It is spot zoning, so
Okay, Bartlet.
I agree with the previous comments. I think it's important to keep the rural character of Great Road as we come into town. And, you know, when you go down the hill, it changes to urban, but that's more or less at the top of the hill, and it's kind of the end of the rural area.
Okay, so if there are further inquiries, you can refer to this conversation.
Yep, I appreciate hearing the feedback. It's good to have it in this open discussion.
The next inquiry was food service drive-throughs. We do not have food service drive-throughs in Littleton, and I guess periodically we get inquiries.
I would, every five to 10 years, do you get a question again?
Yeah.
Right, why no food service drive-throughs?
Mark, you've been on the board for years.
We haven't had it forever. We, I think we limit what Acton does and what Conca does, did 30 years ago. We never put it in the bylaw. We allow for banks, we allow if you wanted to have a drive-through drugstore, we'd allow that, but no takeout food available by car. I think it changes the character, because we're not just talking Dunkin' Donuts or coffee shops, we're talking restaurants. You're talking to McDonald's, you're talking to Chick-fil-A, you're talking all those things, and the town has never had the appetite, for lack of a better word, to have fast food in the town, and I think it's, I don't think that, that's changed. Be nice to have coffee, but that's, you open that can of worms, you're going to get everything, so
I guess, Mike, especially looking at the statement here, if residents were having a demand for drive-throughs, I think that's a, gives a different perspective of it. Developers wanting drive-throughs, I just can't prioritize that.
No.
Okay, I'm a no. Okay, if you want to respond? Okay. E, public input. We're already behind. Is there anyone who needs? Mr. Sanders.
I feel cold just looking at him.
Mr. Chairman, people be able to follow along with you when you use letters for words like the ADU. If people watching this, they don't know what ADU is, so you shouldn't do that. Like, I want to use the word CCC, that's the Chemists' Control Commission. Want to let you know that I sent an email to a compliance officer there requesting that they tell Littleton when the inspectors, the enforcement team is coming out to inspect the sanctuary system here in Littleton with regard to the smell of marijuana. And I also wanted them to notify the town as well as myself, and to give us the results of the inspection. So I sent the email out to Representative Jim Lucero, so his director is going to follow up with the person that sent us the email, that I sent to learn that you all got the email with regards to that. Also, on the 20th of December, I had a conversation telephone about 30 minutes that with Representative from the CCC asked me had I heard from the CCC, which I told her I hadn't. Representative Donahue is the chairman of the junk committee that they have in the House there with regards to the Chemists' Control Commission. They have a lot of complaints. They're not happy with a lot of things, so he sent the letter that I sent to him over to the Chemists' Control for them to answer. And I have particular questions in there that I had concern about, and I pointed out to them, I couldn't understand why is it that it is said that if a permit has already been issued, that you can't go back has already been issued, that you can't go back and require them to do this and that? Well, I understand that the commission is also working on that and they've made changes to the host agreement as well because the marijuana smell is coming up in other communities as well. So it's not Littleton alone. So they are still working on that. And the thing they pointed, the lady pointed out to me was that perhaps at the time this sanctuary was given the permit, maybe a lot of things were not in place as to what they should do. And she suggested that you go back and look at the permit that was issued and see what did you issue requiring them to do. But they're working on that. And they're also working on the, the concerns that I have with regards to that. So I just want to let you know that this is being worked on.
Thank you very much. And I hope you'll attend when we open the hearing on the next step. Okay, item two, Mark wants to speak. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mark.
Mark Ramacher, I'm on the Select Board. I just wanted to let everyone know that we have opened up applications for a charter commission that we're starting, the Select Board's starting to review the form of town government. Applications are open now through January 27. We're gonna have a meeting on February 4 to appoint seven to nine members to the committee. They'll be looking at like which board should be elected versus appointed, whether we should have a town manager, town administrator, all of that stuff. So if anyone's interested, I encourage you to look for the application on the website. And there's more information there. Reach out to the town administrator or the Select Board office if you have any questions.
Can you, can you put it in the town newsletter?
It is in the town newsletter.
Okay, great. I guess I should look at it. Okay, thank you. Okay, we're running a little late. We have a 6:45 informal discussion on 600 Great Road, which is known as Gary's Farm Stand.
Okay, and so we have a quick, quick switch to make. It's not a hearing.
They've requested a remote attendance, so LCTV is going to enable us to do that. This is not a hearing, it's just an informational discussion.
Okay, Marin, this is Britta Kahoon, and if you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out why my video won't start. There we go. Okay, how's that?
Good. Can we have your name and?
Yep, absolutely. So, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. Thank you for the remote option. My name is Britta Kahoon. I'm an attorney with an office at 85 Eastern Avenue in Gloucester. And I will keep it brief, I know it's a busy night. I represent the prospective buyer of the Gary's Farm Stand property. And we wanted to come in and just start a preliminary discussion about proposed plans. My client would like to buy the property and operate a similar farm stand, but expand the use of it. For a little bit of background, he currently farms just about 2,200 acres of land in Massachusetts, New York, and New Hampshire. A thousand of those are here in Mass. He grows produce, flowers, raises cattle, chicken, and turkeys. He doesn't sell wholesale, he sells at his farm stand locations, which right now are in Newbury, Wenham, Dover, and hopefully in Littleton. The primary change from the current use is the addition of fresh butchered meats. So since he intends to cut meat on the premises, we understand that that will constitute food service and require approval from your Board on that expanded use. He would continue to sell fresh produce, dairy, baked goods, specialty food items, flowers, and the like. There are also currently food service permits for two food trucks on site, and those would remain. So we're in a residential district. The proposal conforms to dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaw. We are also in an aquifer zoning overlay district, so I understand that we may have some limits on coverage. I do think we can be flexible in terms of parking and other coverage to work with all of that. So, you know, our goal is to have the expansion of the current use be appropriate for the neighborhood, be beneficial to the neighborhood and the community. And the plans that we shared with you, they are preliminary. Matt wanted me to share with you that he is envisioning a smaller building than what the original draft shows. But I also have his architect, Eileen, here, and she can talk to you a little bit more about the site and the plans.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for that. There's a lot of interest and anticipation for this. Are we talking with the architect now, or do you want comments from the planning board?
Would you like her to tell you anything about the site or the plans, or would you like to comment first?
I think from our point of view, the main issue is especially, it's a, it's a pre-existing use, pre-existing building, et cetera. The main issue is that our jurisdiction, in addition to all the other town boards, et cetera, will be what we would call site plan review. The, that intersection and the way the parking relates to it is a problem. And I think that's one of the main concerns and main areas of jurisdiction we would have. As an attorney, you will need to have the rationale for extending the existing use, which I think that you are, you know, beginning to wrestle with. And I think those are the issues that the planning board would take on.
Okay, thank you, Graff.
In general, I mean, it's, it's basically going to be plus or minus the new services there, you know, a reconditioning of a pretty old facility to more newer and modern standards. And we shouldn't discourage that kind of a site improvement there. So I'm naturally more inclined to, you know, they're, they're not knocking it down to put in houses, they're not knocking it down to put in a warehouse, you know, they're knocking, you know, gonna re, redevelop it in the same manner of what its current use is primarily is something I feel we should be encouraging.
So, along those lines, the history, we changed the bylaw 10 years ago, Maran, for farms. We allowed more expanded use, which is how Spring, Springdale, Springbrook got the uses out in the back. One of them was a butcher shop, actually. I think it was the Pears and.
Right, it, under the accessory business use of an active farm.
Right.
Not clear whether that applies here, but that was at least the idea of one thing that the town was interested in.
We wanted to promote the continuation of the farm stands in Littleton.
Right, and, and that's where I'm at too, is, is this, it doesn't sound incompatible with what's already there. We should be encouraging it, not encouraging them to develop it in, in something that we possibly don't want.
I think the most our jurisdiction should be is the site plan.
Right.
We should let them figure out what they want to put there and just come in with a site plan that addresses the multiple ins and outs that are there.
Parking, loading.
Right, if they can fix up the parking.
In and out of the parking lot, et cetera.
That site predates zoning in Littleton. That's one of the first farm stands that was out here.
We do allow agricultural use in residential zones by special permit. I guess we'd have to, was there ever a special permit issued for this?
This would have predated that requirement.
Predated that, okay.
It's not a, it's grandfathered.
I, I think what is being said is that we're, I think in general, speaking for all of us, I think that your comments are, pretty much represent the way everyone feels.
Since it was an informal discussion, I wanted to signal that we would entertain such a proposal.
Yeah.
The devil's in the details.
Right.
We're not approving those details at this point.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Can we, do you need any more clarification on that?
No, the very helpful comments, thank you.
Okay, I think that's, I think it may be premature to talk about the architectural issues they'll play into, the size, you know, required parking, all that kind of thing, based on the bylaw. It sounds to me that you're not asking, you don't anticipate asking for waivers of development standards. So, you know, it's, we, we hope that we'll have a great butcher shop there. I mean, I don't know, anyway.
We hope so too.
Okay.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
About the, the building proposal, I know we're not talking architecture, I just want to talk about the concept. It looks like you have large retail space and some workspaces in back. My question is, is there really, are you gonna have a greenhouse in front? And is, is that the plan?
I, if, if I could, Eileen, I will let her comment on that.
Sure.
And Eileen, Eileen, I think they want just your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Absolutely. So this is Eileen Graff with Graff Architects, 2 Liberty Street, Newport, Mass. So to speak to that, yes, if, if you were able to, to take a peek at that site plan, generally speaking, the orientation, there's a long, I'll call it a covered walkway, and right behind it are some dilapidated greenhouses. So the plan is to rebuild those structures. We still need to use those for his, you know, intermittent seasons and, and keeping plants alive. So, so rebuild new ones there. They're not permanent structures, they're those thin ones. On the site plan, the darker grayed, pocheted area is the bill, proposal for a new footprint of an addition. As Britta has already mentioned, the, the, Matt, the owner of Tender Crop, feels that we are likely not gonna be building as big as this, is showing, but just wanted to be able to have some, some, something to talk about for tonight's meeting. We did discuss with him about the flow of deliveries and these trucks coming in. You know, he has discussed already or mentioned that he wants those trucks to stay in a, a forward motion, so hopefully that the circulation through the site may be in from Great Road, out from Lawrence, or vice versa. And so concerned about safety as well, and trying to keep that loading dock when it is proposed on the rear of the property, again, for some of the sort of back-of-house appearance to stay on the rear of the, of the structure. But we're, but we're open to hearing and more comments about this, the current situation for entering off of Great Road. It is clearly a, a huge expanse of, of hot top and, and, and a lot of parking, which is wonderful, but we can rearrange how the flow is in and out. So, so we're open to that.
What is the, we, we need an actual proposal to open hearings, et cetera?
Right, if they happen to trigger the requirement for special permits, then we would have a public hearing. Otherwise, it's more of a site plan review. And at that point, you'd have the interests of parking and loading and all of that information on, on a site plan to review.
So, thank you. You may want to, since we'll be focused on the site, you may want to share with us as you go forward, your thinking for our comment before we, you know, we get into engineering and all that kind of thing.
Okay, so primarily, yeah, so parking and flow, et cetera. Yep, absolutely.
And the, the idea behind, the point is, the idea behind the asphalt, especially on Lawrence Street, it shouldn't be continuous with the road. It, there should be, you know, delineation of parking and paving.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, ask a question on process. So if we were to continue conversation to show you some of our ideas, would you prefer that in, in, in a, say, another design session? Is, is there, do you have that format in Littleton where we could schedule a meeting and have, or is it in the public realm again?
Your choice. You can share whatever information you want with staff and we can run it by the other departments for any input, fire, police, DPW, et cetera. And then if you want it to go back to the planning board, you can either have that as the next sketch plan or a fully rendered site plan. Your choice.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, should I ask a little question?
Yes. This isn't a hearing, George. This is just an information.
I thought you said yes.
Oh, yes, but I just want to explain that this is not a hearing.
I just want to comment to them that may be beneficial overall. George Sanders, 672 Great Road. I filed a bill with Jim Osorio when Gary owned that property there. And we was trying to get it under 618 because he was paying commercial tax there. And under the 618, if you have property that's within 10 mile radius of a property, then we was trying to get that provision, which went to the third reading in the last section, but it did not come out to be voted on when it came back in session. So Jim Osorio is re submitting that bill for all farmers. There's a lot of farmers got stands and so forth that falls into the category that.
So you're saying that they would have agricultural property remote from, say, their farm stand?
Said from town.
Yeah, as long as it's 10 miles.
And he can take that number over there to make the five, which is the minimum that you deem for the 618.
It may or may not apply to this client, but I, it's good for them to know.
Yeah, for them to know if they got property.
Okay, well, thank you very much for coming before us. I think you can tell from our comments that we're, in general, welcoming to the continued use of that property as a farm stand. And we'll look forward to hearing from you in the future.
Okay, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, good night.
Okay, we're still late. We are continuing a public hearing regarding 550 Newtown Road. I think a lot of people in the room are for, for this. The hearing was opened and then continued because we were to, to finish the disposition ultimately of this proposal. We need to know more about the existing building, its size, the way it's delineated, et cetera. I don't think we have that information yet.
So I would suggest that we haven't heard the project presentation from, from the applicant.
Okay, so at this point, I'd like to invite the applicant to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Board members, and Maran for the introduction. My name is Kelly Esch. I am a civil engineer and the project manager for this project. I'm with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. And joining me tonight, we have Beau, who's representing Storage Rentals of America, the owner and developer. If the Board agrees, I'd like to reintroduce the project, it's been quite some time since we.
Sure, absolutely, please do. And I think people in the audience will be interested.
Sure. And then I'll provide just a historical timeline of submissions and reviews to date, and then just re-present the project proposal, highlighting the changes, addressing some of the concerns regarding the existing building.
So the file on the drive is an opening.
Okay, that's okay. We can use, this is perfect. So the project site is located at 550 Newtown Road. The owner and developer, as per. The owner and developer, as previously stated, is Storage Rentals of America. The proposed project type is an expansion of an industrial use, more specifically, a self-storage facility, which can be allowed by special permit. We originally submitted the application for site plan, special permit, and stormwater permit review on February 9th of 2023. We presented the project at the March 9th, 2023 Planning Board Hearing. Septic plans, which were prepared by others, were submitted to the Board of Health in March of 2023, and those plans were previously accepted by the Board of Health. We addressed initial comments and submitted the revised civil plans for peer review on May 22nd of 2023. We received peer review comments on June 27th of 2023. Following receipt of peer review comments, we then met with the Fire Marshal, performed additional geotechnical investigations and soil testing, and filed an ANRAD with the Conservation Commission to verify the wetland delineation. Due to the additional investigation and soil testing, the ANRAD filing, and some major plan revisions required, the application was withdrawn without prejudice in April of 2024. The project received the ORAD from the Conservation Commission on October 28th, 2024, which verifies the wetland delineation. This ORAD is valid for three years. The revised application for site plan, special use permit, and stormwater permit was filed on November 20th of 2024. A public hearing was opened on December 12th and continued to tonight, January 9th, to, in order for us to address some of the concerns that were raised in December regarding the existing building. And if there's no questions on just kind of that historical timeline, I can go ahead and discuss the current site conditions and then the project proposal.
Go ahead.
Warren, if you don't mind flipping to a couple sheets prior. That's, this is good, that's fine. The existing site conditions. So the existing overall site is approximately 41 acres, with the existing self-storage facility concentrated on approximately four acres of the property fronting Newtown Road. The remaining portion of the parcel is undeveloped, with forested uplands and wetlands. The parcel is bordered by forested and open wetland undeveloped areas to the north and south. Fort Pond borders the southeastern portion of the parcel. There is a lot of topography across the site, falls greater than 50 feet across the site, from the toe of the slope to the commercial space at the top of the slope. And, and generally, the site slopes from the road south to the wetlands. Currently, site access is provided via a single driveway. The property is located within two zoning districts. A small portion of the property fronting the road is zoned residential R, and the remaining majority of this, of the parcel is zoned industrial A. The site contains an existing self-storage building with 230 storage units and approximately 12,800 square feet of office use. In December, we received questions regarding some interior building work that was performed. It has been brought to our attention, this work was unauthorized. And since then, the owner has halted all interior building work and will obtain all required building permits prior to proceeding. The interior building improvements will not change any use or density of the existing facility. So those 230 existing storage units and the 12,800 square feet of office space will remain. The unit count and mix will not change in the proposed condition. There is an existing septic system on site, which you can see just above the wetland delineation line on the screen there, which failed a Title V inspection under the previous operator and will require relocation. There is also existing stormwater conveyance that discharges offsite and a storm, and an existing stormwater infiltration basin, which is in need of maintenance. It has also been brought to the owner's attention that the existing building mounted lights are disruptive to the neighbors. And so new full, full cutoff, downcast, dark sky compliant light fixtures have been ordered and are scheduled to be installed next week, weather permitting, on the building. Previously, the owner had been notified about lights, and I believe it was on the front side of the building, so those were replaced, and the ones on the rear had not been. So there are six new light fixtures that are scheduled to arrive and be installed next week for the remainder of the building that are full cutoff, downcast lights. And then lastly, we'll work with the planning board to address any concerns regarding the existing building signage. It is the client's intent to remove any non-compliant signage and/or obtain any necessary permits or variances, should relief from any town regulations be necessary to maintain operations.
Just one clarification, you mentioned lights along the front. What about the lights that are on the side towards the parking area?
Those will be replaced, those two, there's two there, I believe, and then four on the backside. Yep, so that, those six will be replaced. Okay, and you can flip back forward to the site plan, please, thank you very much. You can keep going, I think it's a couple sheets ahead. There we go, perfect. Okay, so the proposed project proposes to expand the existing self-storage facility by constructing a three-story plus basement self-storage building with associated site improvements, including paving, landscaping, a new firesite access drive, fire-water service, and stormwater management in accordance with Littleton and Mass DEP regulations. In addition to the work associated with the proposed redevelopment project, site maintenance and improvements are proposed to address the existing conditions. No impacts or disturbance to the wetland or its buffers are proposed. No domestic water or sanitary sewer services for the new building are proposed. As previously stated, a special permit will be sought for the self-storage use. However, no variances or relief from bulk or parking requirements is being requested. So the proposed building will be a pre-engineered metal building structure. It's approximately 22,500 square feet in footprint for the levels above grade, and the basement level is about 17,200 square feet. There's a total of 485 storage units being proposed among the, all the floors. These vary in size in five-foot increments, so five by 10, five by 15, 10 by 15, et cetera. Site access will still be provided via the existing driveway. A new fire egress drive is proposed. This driveway will be gated and only accessible by the fire department in the event of an emergency. The existing parking lot will be restripped to provide an additional 17 spaces on site. There are 13 existing spaces and a total of 30 proposed spaces, which meets zoning requirements. Regarding traffic generation, in general, self-storage is a low-trip generating land use. The proposed expansion is estimated to generate only eight new vehicle trips during the AM peak hour. That's five entering, three exiting, and 13 in the PM peak hour, which is six entering, seven exiting. The total of the existing facility with the proposed expansion still results in a, in a low number of total trips related to the self-storage facility. There's approximately 0.32 acres of additional impervious area being proposed. And because of that, additional stormwater management is, is proposed to account for that increase in impervious surface. The proposed stormwater management system will be comprised of deep-sump catch basins, sediment forbey, and an above-ground infiltration basin. The existing catch basin that discharges offsite will be removed and rerouted to discharge to the existing infiltration basin as originally designed and approved. Fire-water service is being proposed for the sprinkler building, only, no domestic water service is being proposed. There is no office or toilet being proposed in this building. Relocation of the septic system is required in response to the failed Title V inspection. And then additionally, the septic system was relocated again in order to accommodate the firesite egress drive that was required by the fire chief. And then if you want to flip ahead to the landscape plan. Sorry, should I be towards the end, there we go, perfect. There are rows of evergreens being proposed, abutting the residential neighbors. And then additionally, there are plantings proposed along the road frontage to help enhance that as well. And then we can move to the architectural plans now and discuss the building. And we could probably start with the building elevations. And if anyone wants to look at floor plans, we can look at individual floor plans following. If you don't mind flipping back one page, that would be, thank you very much. So the primary exterior material for the building will be a light-colored vinyl siding, which is intended to match as closely as possible to the materials used on the existing building. However, in response to previous neighbor concerns, portions of the building which directly face adjacent residences have been revised to appear more residential in nature, which you can see on the elevations and on the, the renderings following. But certain design elements such as gabled roofs, residential-style windows with shutters, have been added to, to help soften the look of the building and fit more into the neighborhood character. The windows proposed for the elevation will not, of course, be true windows, in that they will be opaque and are being included for aesthetic appearance only. Lights from the interior will not be visible through them, nor will interior storage items. The base of the building is proposed to be a brick-patterned EPIS, which is exposed insulation finish system. It will have the appearance of brick, but offers the energy efficiency of a continuous rigid insulation. The roof of the building will be a light gray with a minimal pitch for drainage. As shown on the exterior elevations, the, the building height as measured from the average-grade plane will be 40 feet, which is in compliance with the height regulations for the district. And if you want to flip to the renderings, I think it gives a good visual perspective of, yeah, thank you, from the road and how it will interact with the existing development on site. So you can see that the height of the building and the height of the existing facility are pretty similar in, in relation to the visibility from the road. Additionally, you know, the majority of the new building will be, will be shielded from view by the existing facility from the road. And I would like to pause there for any questions, and I can elaborate on any design items that I, you know, touched on, briefly answer any questions that you may have. And again, we do have Beau here tonight, too, if there are any operational questions that you have.
Yeah, I, I think one of the questions I had, because I couldn't pull, I didn't quite see this diagram when I originally looked, is, is the visibility of the new building from the street. Because I couldn't tell where the roof lines, was this going to be sitting below that so that it was basically obstructed by the piece there, or is it going to be above the roof lines of the existing roof line?
Yeah, it's not fully obstructed, so I think the third rendering down is probably a good example. While it's not from the perspective of the road, you can kind of see the height difference. The majority of the building will be obstructive and sits behind and lower, but you will see a portion of it above.
I might point out that the second one down might be more representative because you see the existing building forward. In this one, because of the perspective, it appears to be much taller.
Sure.
In reality, wouldn't be. But I might suggest that you, could you merge one of these diagrams with the second photo down? And it might just show that.
Yeah, because I think we need a perspective from the street, or, or at the, on the driveway perspective there.
Everyone, including the neighbors, will be looking at it from the road. The road is elevated from the, anyway, so it's, anyway, it would, the picture's worth a thousand words.
And, because when I was taking the elevations off of the ground and the 42 feet, it was difficult to see that it, at one point, it may have looked like it was 10 feet above the existing building. So I'd like to get a much more concrete definition of what that actually looks like. Okay, do you have more, do you have more presentation?
That's it for what I wanted to at least introduce this evening, I can go in depth on.
No, no, that's fine, what I'm going to do is open it up to the board and then to the floor. Daryl, you've made, do you have any more comments?
Yeah, I, I've got a couple of comments here. So you clarified that the, it's a fire-access road, not a driveway that goes all the way through at this point?
Correct.
On that, I, I, in looking at the plan, there's no, there's no buffer space between the outlet of the exit and the neighbor there, like there is on the driveway side there. So there's no buffering there for both plowing and visual block, you know, visual shielding.
Yeah, so.
Which just gives me concern, because again, it seems to encroach now on that neighbor fairly substantially. There, I, I, you know, whether you address them tonight or not, I'm just listing off my, my, my comments here. So the other part there is, there is traffic flow currently to the left side of the building. There's a loading dock back there and stuff like that. How does that, it looks like it's going to be awfully tight between the new building and the old building and access back there. And I really question whether there's enough width allowed for the flow of, you know, a pickup truck with a trailer on the back of it, or even a regular standard moving, moving van. And then the concept that, since it's so narrow, whether, if, if there is a vehicle there, is there actually fire access available on it? Because it is, it's not two vehicles wide, it's, it's basically one vehicle wide in there. And when I rented a U-Haul at a storage place in Boston, I got trapped for half an hour because somebody parked in the, in the, in the road and went in the building, and there was no way for me to get out. I see elements of that here. So I'd like to make sure that that, how that traffic flow is really addressed.
Sure.
I think, I guess it'd be for the fire department's review in terms of whether there's adequate access to all sides of the building for fire protection. The driveway, I know it's an existing driveway for the current building there, but again, it's a narrow entry between the two posts, the two brick buildup things there. Is that adequate for when you're going to basically triple the size of the facility there? And it ties into your traffic trips count there. Do you have a current traffic study of, of how many trips per day is in the current building?
Yes, but based on IT, not current. Yeah, so it's more conservative because it's based on IT, not actual.
I'd like to just see that that's, you know.
Sure, yeah, we have that, I can tell it to you now or give it to you.
Then you can provide, this is not really good form to try to, to do that. Let's see, yeah, the setback on the, on that driveway. Okay, so the other part there, and I, I think I saw some comments from some of the neighbors about drainage into their lots from the existing piece here. So I'd like to make sure we see how we are addressing existing drainage concerns by the neighbors. I don't know which ones are issues. I know, you know, most of that whole lot is drainage for, you know, for wetlands. But I'm really concerned about making sure that the, any concerns about drainage on the upper portion of it there has been addressed. Because I also noticed that there's significant slop, significant fall off. Significant fall off to the neighbors from that lot. So anything that falls off your driveway goes right into the neighbors there. I'd like to make sure that... How is that addressed in the plans? And then, okay, since it's an egress... Emergency egress road there, I assume that the slope of that, because again, it drops off pretty significantly to the existing piece there, that you haven't created a driveway slope that's not compatible with what the fire department needs.
Yeah, they've reviewed it.
Okay. And then it sounds like the zoning concerns that were identified, at least sounds like they're starting to be addressed. So I'll just wait till those work their way through the process here.
Okay, thank you.
So my question relates to the special permit for major commercial. One item in particular, it says the degree of threat to environmental resources, including loss of valuable trees and other vegetation, disturbance to habitats and soil loss or erosion. So from the current state, I'd like to get an understanding of what vegetation is going to be going away, you know, number of trees. Information like that would be really helpful to understand.
Building on Anna's comment, I'd just like to know more about the landscaping of that long slope down to the hundred-foot buffer zone line. That's a very big disturbed area, fairly steep slope. I don't think grass is going to do it.
Can we have some site sections or...
We don't have site sections, just the landscaping plan.
No, but I mean, could we... Could you develop a site section? So people... I mean, there are neighbor concerns about that. Mark?
The only thing I want to say is that memory serves me correctly from over a year and a half ago. The issue was the left-hand side where it was coming across the road into the neighbors. You're taking that drainage out and putting it more into the back, which is where it probably should go. You're doing more landscaping than you proposed the first time you came around it. So I'm happy that you at least listened to what the neighbors had to say. I like the idea that you're making it look more like an apartment building than a big box storage facility. And I too would like to see how the elevation looks in the front of the building. The back is forty-three acres of wetland, so I don't know if the beavers care what it looks like. Anyway, but at least changing the lights, doing the drainage and doing the... Getting the drainage properly located and at least feeling better about that. Thank you.
My feeling is you have responded to a lot of the neighbors' concerns and they can educate me on this afterward, I mean, when I give the floor to them. I want to talk about the stormwater thing because there are concerns both from the neighbors where the stormwater was being directed to and for people down the slope. And my understanding, based on our bylaw, peer review, et cetera, that all stormwater should be stored on site, not directed to go down the slope and this and that and everything. It's something that as an engineer, you probably just take for granted. But for our neighbors, there are requirements and there's peer review, which the... With... From an independent site engineer. So that's one thing. The lighting, I'm glad you talked about that. Signage is an issue. I think you need to show us what you intend to propose. And the... I was a little confused about the traffic mention is with those net trips in addition to the existing building or... Okay.
Yeah, so those numbers are trips being added.
Added.
By the proposed expansion.
And in general, like Mark, I think that you have responded to the... A lot of the issues that were brought up. But I like Bartlett, I'd like to understand a little bit more about what's going on behind the building, the slope, the materials, the, you know... I glanced at one side, it looked like you were building a big retaining wall, but you're not. You're just grading it up. And so if we could have... If we could have just a little more presentation on view from the road of the new building and the back, more detail of the back.
Mr. Chair, can I add on to what you just said? So specifically in our bylaw, it's section one seventy-three dash eight-eight C four. And that speaks to providing us with analysis of the consequence of the proposed development regarding the natural environment, groundwater, surface water quality, groundwater level, stream flow, erosion, siltation, all of that, vegetation removal and wildlife habitat. So that's another portion of it that I think if that could be brought back to us in a manageable to understand format, that would be great for everybody here. Thank you.
Any other comments? I'm going to open it to the floor. Who would like to speak? Yes, state your name and address.
Dwight Calhoun, five forty Newtown Road.
I don't think they'll be able to hear him unless he comes up to the microphone.
Okay, can you come forward because we won't be able to hear you.
TV one.
Yeah, thank you.
Dwight Calhoun from five forty Newtown Road. Very happy to hear about the change in the lighting that's planned for next week. But I'm kind of dismayed it's taken at least seven years, I think, for that to happen. And I don't know how that indicates anything going forward with this new work. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you.
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
So we purchased the property, I think, in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. I know we received one complaint about a light which we immediately went out and fixed. Until I saw a letter, you know, in December with a picture of the remaining lights, you know, that was the first time it was brought to my attention. Immediately sent out by G C and we're going to replace all the lighting. So we, you know, we have it on the... I don't know when it was churned into a storage facility or when that lighting was installed, but, you know, I promise you soon. We change out lighting for our neighbors all the time. It's not difficult for us to do. So once I heard that that was a larger complaint, I know we changed out one or two fixtures before. And then that was the last... I thought that solved the problem. As soon as I heard that there was an issue, I immediately...
Can you just, for the record, identify?
Honestly, my name is Beau Raisch. I'm with Storage Rentals America, I'm VP of Development based out of West Palm Beach.
Were you in the initial hearings?
Yes, that was your case.
Thank you. Anything else?
The curiosity is that there's a bylaw of all the things you can't do with lighting. And it's more than seven years, right? You're supposed to look at that list and be familiar with it.
Sure, well, I apologize that it took us long, but we're... Next, if there's any issues going further, you can... I'll give everyone my information. You can... If, you know, whatever we do next week doesn't solve it, please, by all means, reach out. We'll fix it.
Okay.
Should I go to the podium?
Sure, and identify yourself.
Dominic Ryan, five forty-four Newtown Road. We have the largest stretch of a budding property line to the storage place. I am glad to see that the lighting situation has been improved. There were other complaints, not just one, over multiple years. So however it didn't translate, anyway, I'm glad to see that's in place. There is a remaining lighting concern. I want to talk about the vegetation on the border between the two of us. In the original presentation, it was described that the new facility would have glass stairways, glass frontage, lights inside. Now, pretty much no other property, except for my neighbor John and myself, would look straight into that. So there's a lot of light that's going to be happening there. I'm going to be seeing a lot of light coming out of there. So I think I would really like to have explained what that frontage and glass and stairway and lighting is going to look like before it goes up. The second question that I have has to do with the vegetation along the border line between myself and that property. We've mentioned that...
One thing, are you on the left or the right side?
We're on the right. We're on the right side. I'm sorry.
I just don't know what part of the road is numbered there.
Yeah, five forty-four is on the right-hand side of this plan.
Thank you.
And then my neighbor John Lewis has got a smaller section next to mine, which also does the same. And the drainage going through is going to move. That's a plus as well. I'm glad to see that. So thank you for moving some of those things forward. The vegetation line though, and the property line, we're supposed to have some sort of barrier between. I question how well a vegetation or evergreens are going to do this. I don't want to wait forty-five years for an adequate barrier to come up there. And the second is if you put a lot of trees along there, they're going to grow. How are they going to get going into the space that I use for our chickens, for example? Like that, we really don't want that to be happening either. And just as an example of the impact of traffic and maintenance, we have snowplows that dump snow through in there. I am constantly picking up broken glass and trash and all kinds of things that are coming from that parking space. So that's a significant concern that I have. That barrier of evergreens is not going to work. That's not going to do it. In fact, when you also have had maintenance for a lawnmower go through, one day I happened to be there and had a stone kick right through me because, you know, there's nothing separating me. So you had a lawnmower that threw stones up. Actually, I almost killed one of the chickens too. So that's just, you know, okay, it's a chicken, but that's an example of... So I, you know, so those are things that maybe weren't clarified sufficiently now, before now, but I just want to make sure you understand that something more than evergreens, I think, is needed to make that an effective barrier.
So would you feel most comfortable with a combination of a fence and evergreens? Is that what you're sort of alluding to?
Well, I don't. So I think a permanent, like some sort of ripped up fence structure would be good. I put up my own fence because when I had asked about this fencing beforehand to the previous owner, it was crickets. I got nowhere. So I put up a fence myself. That was at my own expense. But I don't want that fence to be seen as, oh, problem solved. Right, that was my speedion because nobody would do anything about it.
Because I was going to ask along the... Because like I drove by and I see that it's a wire fence now.
Maybe a stockade.
Would it be better if that was... If they included a stockade fence in front of the... Or however, you know...
Something, I'm not... I don't want to prescribe a specific...
No, I'm not either. I'm just saying something more blocking.
Something definitely much more blocking.
Than the wire fence.
Right, and I think it needs to include some sort of erosion protection because that snow, the plows, the thing, it's been pushing that land further and further down. So the fence that I put up isn't going to survive that much longer because of the erosion coming off the parking lot. So something that addresses that, I think, would be very important.
You're describing this and I understand it. What might be most helpful though, just to... So that I'm making sure I'm actually addressing the problem, I'd like to send, if you'd be willing to do it, have one of my project managers come up here and walk the property line. That way we can like... You know, I don't want to come up, to your point, I don't want to say, here's a fence, it doesn't really address the issue.
I thank you and I appreciate that.
We can really understand just the nuance of what you're, you know, making sure that whatever's huge, it's going to cost us money and want to make sure I'm spending it wisely on something that's actually going to fix the problem.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. So I... So for now, I do understand, we can understand that evergreens, you know, there may be a temporary solution to causing a problem eventually as well. So, yes, I would be...
Yeah, I'll come up to... I think if we can see it and just understand the dimensions, you know, it's just something that's hard to... You're explaining it, I get it, but I want to, you know, being able to see it.
Let's communicate and know when would be a good time. I'd be happy to have somebody come up here. If you're done with the same way, have you guys worked through this?
And that ties into my comment before also about ensuring that the grading in that area, that your water stays on your side of it and not just flows down the hill into his lawn.
And more than just water, snowplows and pushing stuff down there and trash.
Just as an overarching point, you know, I know that there have been, you know, you know, I met the previous owner. I don't know what, you know, he didn't seem like he cared too much about what happened there. You know, I know we've come in there, tried to improve the condition there. I know not always, you know, there was so much trash and garbage just buried in the bushes and stuff around the property. So we went and trimmed all that back and then I know that upset you because now you could see that. We were just trying to get, there was car axles and everything you could imagine just shoved. So we were trying to clean the property up. So, but anyways, we're doing all these little fixes. This is a, you know, we're going to invest a lot of money into the property. See, you know, to build this building, fix the drainage, do all that stuff. So this is our shot to fix all this, spend a lot of money to do it, you know, and I mean, and try, you know, and I'd like to do it right as part of that process. I mean, you know, it's one thing when you're like, okay, well, here's a couple thousand dollars to fix this. It's like, you know, we're going to, you know, call capital to build, you know, ten, twelve million dollar building. I can spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to remedy all this stuff in one go as part of that project. It'll... I think it'll...
No, I applaud your willingness to try and address all this. I think that's very helpful. And, you know, your onsite manager, you know, he may further help things by changing his attitude to the neighbors.
I'll address that, yeah. And I'll make sure you guys have my contact info. Sometimes the onsite people aren't always there. They're just there trying to right the unit, so.
Yeah, I get that too. So, thank you. I think that covers most of my issues, so we'll see how things play out. Appreciate the time.
And I appreciate the comments that you're making there because it sounded, you know, it was starting off with some of the things there that it was not going to... It was going to be a little bit more hostile in terms of getting things done. And I really appreciate the effort in the words that you're saying.
This isn't an excuse, but we, you know, we own six hundred stores across the country. I'm running around a lot of these things. I wish I could depend more on the onsite staff to communicate things back to me. And that's not your problem. That's my problem and I apologize for it. But I'm happy to, you know, this is a big project for us and I don't want to... I want to have good relations with the neighbors. I know this is not ideal for you all, but, you know, it's just a part of our business plan. To the extent that I can do whatever I can to make it more palatable, I'm happy to.
No, I appreciate that. Actually, there is one more thing. Sorry, I just remembered this. This may no longer apply, but some of the units, the way some of the units have been used at a ground level, I hesitate to call that self-storage. It's a bit more like, we have a space that we can expand our business, like ongoing carpentry and machining that has been taking place with doors open and sounds, you know, music layering out because they're running the business out of the storage unit.
Yeah, we actively discourage that. If that's happening, I'll take a look. That shouldn't be, you know, we don't run flex space. I mean, we run self-storage. In fact, whenever we buy a property with what we call like flex space or like light industrial, we usually get rid of that. So that property is a little bit unique because there is just some odd space in it. So I'll check with operations to make sure.
And would you equally discourage a sub-private business that's using a sub-storage place as a kind of a warehouse? Sort of things go back and forth and collecting things?
I mean, I can't... It depends on what it is. I mean, yes, I mean, you know, we do have a lot of, you know, landscaping businesses, things like that, that will... I mean, granted, if it's creating an excessive nuisance, I mean, then, you know, this new building will all be interior storage. It won't really lend itself to that. It won't be, there won't be exterior doors where people can just pull their trailers in and out every morning, that kind of thing. This is more for your, you know, painting airways, couches or stuff like that. So this isn't that kind of storage. And so we'll take a look. I'll check with operations. I'll make a note to check with operations on that.
I appreciate that because I think that activity contributes to some of the anxiety people feel.
Yeah, and as part of getting this done, if that's sort of the... If I've got to have a stern talk with operations, be like, hey, look, if you want, if we want this approved and all this additional square footage, you know, we may have to, you know, be a little bit more careful as who we're renting those units to because I don't want to tick off the neighbors. So appreciate that. Happy to have that conversation.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
John Lewis, three Omega Way. Yeah, Dominic, everything you said is true. I totally have seen the same thing with the noise and the litter. My wife just told me that your resale boxes sign is probably in my yard at the moment. It's been blown by the wind off your site into ours. When my wife complained about the trash, I ended up in the police being called. In my letters, you know, being woken up at four thirty in the morning, we called the police. And we had headlights, new lights glaring through our bedroom windows. And the back of my yard is just constantly illuminated. I've lost all my bees. You keep your bees for a lot of years and the last two years have been wiped out. They just don't survive anymore of the spotlights.
Does that, has that condition changed?
Yeah, we used to have lights about that. And the initial complaint, I did stress that I was very concerned about that. So it's not new information. So Dominic's right. There is, I think it's kind of a swale between him and the storage unit. And I think you're seeing that swale get filled in, which is going to impact your drainage of your sector and also my sector eventually. So maintaining that swale is very important. Previous owner was... Previous owner was very good at plowing snow into that. I even saw my neighbor's tree shaking. And my yard got buried in snow exactly where you're proposing to put it. So I do know if you put snow there, he's going to end up in my yard, not in your yard. So that's not going to work. And I noticed on the plan, you've got parking space with two cars. And if you're putting this much money, as you've said, into a nice storage unit, you know, it'd be really nice if you could fix the parking so that you, you can maintain that separation area as you're meant to do by the zoning. So that would be helpful. Now, you talked about on the, our neighbors on the other side, I don't see them here today. They're, they're very new. They just bought that house. It's a new development. You're showing the screening picture at the moment. If you, if you jump back to the site plan, you will see that fire access road move. Do you just go back like the third one? See, it moved? Go back again? See, right there, that road is up against, and now it's moved back again. So the plans here are not consistent. Do you see that?
This location is a correct location. I'm not sure why that landscape plan, I believe in the physical.
So we need a landscape plan that shows the correct site plan and the proposed screening.
Yes, and that has all been updated. I'm not sure why this.
Can you provide that to the, to the board, please? So the, the other concern is the height of this building. You talked about what the street view is. Most people and neighbors would see it from the street. But we see it from our yard. And it's going to, it's in the, where's north on this? Does it show where north is? It should do. But you see the sun sets in the west, and that building is to the west of our property. So we're going to lose all the light.
North will be where you turn on the lights.
Yeah, so we're going to lose all the light for the end of the day. So it's going to have a huge impact on us for the light and use of our yard in that sense. So we're very, very concerned. That's how, how's this impact our property? It's going to be uphill from us, and it's four stories high. It is a very, very large building. So it's going to have a big impact on ourselves and on the residents, and also looking for that light from the west.
I would just like to point out, they're not asking for a waiver from the height. They're, they're within the zoning for height.
So if you want to talk about zoning, the industrial, the, the unit proposed is inside the industrial zone, which is surrounded by residential zone on three sides. And so if you want to put that fire access in, that surely that requires special zoning to cross a residential zone from an industrial zone. Could that be correct?
We have to, I don't know, I, I don't think so either, but.
Okay. So, you know, thank you for addressing the existing issues that we have or saying we will. You know, but still, for our property, we still have a large amount of concerns of how this is going to impact us. I'm sorry that our other neighbors aren't here to, to show their concern as well, but they're very concerned about, you know, where that property line is and how this is going to, how this is going to impact them.
So on the impact of the western view, what is your feeling about the screening proposed of trees? Would you?
I, I, I think it's, it's not.
But I mean, would that further impact, I mean, when they mature, would that further impact it? Or, I, I guess.
So there are trees there now.
Okay.
And they're, they're deciduous. They're not in good health. Actually, one of them is, there's one that was damaged in the storm in the spring. It's overhanging the block to light. So it is dangerous to us. If you could clean that up, I appreciate it. I do realize that you've taken away all the dead ash, a lot of the dead ash, which was more safe for your clients or for us, so I appreciate that. Deciduous trees do let the light in in the winter.
So you would prefer to see a deciduous, if there was a buffer.
So we are getting light at the moment, is my point. In the winter, when, when the sun is low, we are getting the light.
Okay. I'm just, I'm sure the site engineers take the notes, and that may be something to consider. But both you and your neighbor's comments, it seems like one of the biggest concerns is that property line, the grading, the buffer, the drainage. Now, we have to assume that the drainage will be corrected because our stormwater bylaw requires it to be disposed on the site. But the snow storage is an interesting point.
And also remember that, so listen, Jim, we're talking about the screening, the buffering. This is a storage unit. When we met in twenty-three, we asked about what your opening times are, and we were told it was like nine to five. When you look on the website, I believe that they are advertising six to ten.
Office hours are, office hours are nine to five, close Wednesdays and Sundays. Access to the facility for the resident, for the customers is six to ten.
So those site accesses, then what hours are your traffic surveyed on?
There wasn't a traffic survey done. It was a trip generation study based on industry standards.
For what hours?
For A, A M and P and P.
Over what hour? Through six to ten?
Yes, through, through the entire, yes.
So it's, it's an industrial unit or industrial, it's a small industrial area in a, surrounded by residential. It used to be a farm. It's not part, it's not in a, I don't know what we call it, it's not in our town planning as an industrial area. It's not in our, in our plans. So I'm very concerned about, you know, traffic from six till ten, you know, going in and out, disturbing us. But also that when I look at other storage units, I see that some of them are moving over to twenty-four seven as well. So this, this has potential to be accessed all, you know, seven days a week, like twenty-four hours. That's really not appropriate in a, in, in, I've got a dent residential, but obviously it's not a dent society. It's really not appropriate. It's not appropriate use of the, of the area, and it's not a benefit to the community.
Okay. The hours is a good point to consider. We'll go forward and see what we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just for clarification, in the old days, that was called Bowmar.
Yeah, it was a bowling alley.
It was, they manufactured bowling machines and it had, it was there for fifty years. It wasn't just storage. It was actually a manufacturing facility back.
So the, the book, the, the history of Littleton, that's where I got the information on that. That has a lot of information about the history of that area. It is, is very worth reading.
I used to go there. In the day, when we were kids, you could go there and bowl for free as long as you, they needed people to practice the bowling alley, so they would let.
So I, I was wondering, actually, because the book said that the inventor of the pin-setting machine, so I was wondering if what you were playing on was actually a demonstration for people to come and see how it worked.
They actually made them there.
Yes, but they, that was their.
More testing.
Their, their, you know.
It was testing to show they were, they were working.
Yeah, but you used to go, too?
Oh, brother did.
Yeah, we stick all the time. On Friday nights, they let you bowl for free. They had two or three practice lanes, and they were making them all, on day one, and you could practice.
Was it bowling or candle practice?
Candle. They got stupid. One against, one tried to do ten, ten, and then.
It wasn't candle, it was big balls. It was the big ones.
No, it was candle. Bowmar was candle.
Massachusetts. They could hit both, actually. It probably hit more.
We have a little historic brain trust here, so.
I live next to it, so.
Okay. Can you identify yourself?
Charles House, five sixty-four Newtown Road. As we were saying, that building originally was never meant for storage, probably. The original building was actually, McGalore was the first person, not actually, McGalore Corporation was the first corporation there before Bowmar was there. McGalore then down Mega Way. So when this was zoned for industrial, it was zoned because they had a manufacturing company there, not a storage company. And I don't think when they made the whole property industrial, they had the foresight of seeing, you know, a gigantic storage facility coming in. I got a couple of concerns. Yes, you probably won't be able to see the building if you're standing in front of the building on the road, but as you're coming up the road from Acton, that building will stick out like a sore thumb. You will definitely see that new building. Because I can see, busy coming around the corner from my house, you can see the, the current building. The access road for the fire department. You guys did an A and R in twenty nineteen or twenty twenty? I can't remember which one it was, I mean, the date. And I'm also wondering if that access road's on that N A R property. If that's even legal to do that. So that's something else you may want to look into. Those are my major concerns I have right now. The lighting on the side of the building doesn't bother me because I'm far enough away from it. The other thing is, I'm not too sure how you can enforce your hours.
You're saying you open up from six or nine to, to ten? Want to stop somebody from driving in there at eleven o'clock at night, two in the morning?
The building's locked. There's an access code that you use to get in the building, and after ten o'clock, it doesn't, between ten and six, it doesn't work.
The other problem I can see issue is, I'm going there to self-storage. I'm coming from thirty miles away. I got to go to bathroom because there's no restrooms. So are people urinating outside the building?
Restroom's the main building, and we're not putting a new restroom in the, in the new, in the building that we're adding, but there's a restroom in the, in the office. So if someone needs to use the bathroom, they'll show up to the office.
So the other building's also going to be open the same hours?
Yes.
I've had people urinating in the other.
Hazardous waste?
Not allowed.
Not allowed?
On the condo.
They've already had a few cases from over there, if you check the records. So I don't know how you can, I don't even know how you can even stop somebody from doing that anyways. I mean, you don't know, rights for going to the facility, so it's something that you can't really.
People storing hazardous waste in the property?
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's forbidden, but I, I, we own.
Yeah, yeah, it's forbidden. I just know, you don't really have, unfortunately, it can happen, but you really don't have any control over it, I don't think. Because you can't really check everybody else, what they're bringing in and.
No, just a story, I mean, across all the stores we own and all of our experience in stores, there's never been a really issue. I mean, I'm not saying it cannot happen, but that'd be extremely, extremely rare.
Right, because you, you've already had one, isn't it, at this location, so. I still think, like I said, the, the building will be viewable. You can't just take it from looking straight down. It will block their, their sunlight, definitely because of the direction it's at. I'm probably going to be looking at the forty-foot portion of it, where my house is located, definitely. Because I'm to the left-hand side of the, of the graph up there. And I'm also, I notice that you're going to have a gate, so hopefully that'll keep people from trying to drive out that way. Water issues, they don't really affect me because I'm far enough away from it. But like my, the neighbor's saying, that could be a big issue. I'm not too sure where the, the sector system's going because I know the proposed sector system right now is over like what with the access road is, so I'm assuming you're doing a new sector system overview.
We, we had, the existing sector system is no longer functioning, so that was part of the problem. We, we have to do that anyway, so.
Right, but I mean, the one that's already been approved is going to have to, you're going to have to get another one approved, but the one's approved is not going to work with the way you're.
Right, with the fire department, we're barred to put in that, that secondary access.
That took care of. Yeah. I mean, that's pretty much probably it.
Thank you. Anything else?
Joe Mini, we're on five five three Newtown Road, so I'm just above, across the street from the entrance. And again, just really echoing all the neighbors' concerns, of course, they're downstream of that. I, I'm, I'm in that same position regarding the other development that, that took place downstream of the five 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 one, so I get the concern. I guess I would just like to echo just some of the aggregate concerns here. I haven't really had time to dive in as, as deeply as John has, but. So just my gut tells me that this is, you know, increasing the, the square footage by a hundred and thirty-five percent, right? So sixty thousand square foot building to another eighty-five thousand. And then if you look at the, the storage units, it's a two hundred and thirty percent increase from two hundred and thirty units to an additional four hundred and eighty-five in a primarily residential neighborhood. That's just gonna, I mean, just, my gut just sinks on that. It just tells me that that's not a good, a, a good way forward for that, for that piece of property. I mean, obviously, I'm right across the street. We look at that building and, and, and so then. So what, what downstream of that, what does that translate to? To me, it instinctively, I, I heard the traffic numbers, and I, I just thought that was like ridiculously low. I, I mean, I, I don't do these studies for, for a living, but increased automobile and truck traffic into that property just seems to skyrocket with, with those numbers. And then with that comes a noise and a disturbance level. I, I, I heard that the thing is locked out at ten P M., but sometimes, and I, I can't remember, I'd have to, you know, I don't keep notes, but it does seem that that property is sometimes at twenty-four seven. And it may not be people accessing the storage unit, but something's going on there, whether they're bringing trucks in or, and it seems to happen at all hours. So I see a greater opportunity for that. And then I, I think, picking up on John's comment, the second building is going to be climate-controlled. I'm not sure if that's going to produce a noise impact that, that we can hear, depending on the conditions, you know, that, that, whatever that drone sound is going to be, whether that's going to impinge on us. Also, the lighting on, on that second building, that, that has been an issue. And it, I, we are up on a hill across the street, so if it's ten feet from the road or whatever the, and I know we're working on the roof lines, certainly we'll be able to see a portion of that building. And depending on where the lights are, I would imagine that would add to the light pollution. And then just looking at, and I think somebody else brought it up, putting the building there on that slope just seems claustrophobic in that little narrow ribbon of asphalt between the two buildings, which has now got to handle all that traffic, the trucks and such. And, and it just seems like woefully inadequate to, to manage all of that, that destination space, that little piece. But, and so what does that mean? Does that mean that they spill out further out onto the open area or, God forbid, out onto the road? I, I can't imagine, I mean, it is a storage unit. They're not all going to come at the same time, but it, that's a two hundred, four hundred and eighty-five additional units. It's going to have a draw. And, and so I guess I just wanted to, just quickly looking at the plans and just looking across the street for a whole second building larger than the first is just not what I ever thought was a possibility. So really just coming at it from that standpoint, not having had the opportunity to peel the onion back and get down into the details like maybe John has, but, but very much concerned. And so I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Anything else? With that, we will continue the hearing. The two representatives of the applicant have been taking notes. And do we want to set a time?
Yep, I have not yet circled back with the peer review engineer to find out their timeframe for providing a review of the updated materials. That might help inform when you want to continue the hearing, too.
Well, we opened it in December. I think we should try to continue it to February, regardless of the peer review. And that means if we don't have the peer review, then we can't, you know, dispose of it. But we can further the discussion between the applicant and the neighbors.
If they have some homework, they have to do it, too.
Yeah, I think, I think the next thing I'd like to do, probably forward in the back here, is, you know, just given the comments and some of the homework assignments you've given us, is, is, you know, put together maybe like a little bit more. us, is, you know, put together maybe like a little bit more formal, not formal, like a present. I'll get some additional renderings done, the street...
I think you should, I think you should do that, and let the...
I'll plan a trip up here with my project managers to, you know, try to totally version them stone, and just, you know, meet with the neighbors more one-on-one. I mean, obviously, I know I can't address all the concerns, but at least address...
And the, you know, I think we'd want to know about signage, the hours discussion, I think should still be on the table.
Is February work for you, or do you want to push it back another month? Does that give you more time?
If you want...
February would be the sixth?
Yeah.
Well, let me, can I get back to you on that? Let me figure out when I can get the, I gotta get with my architects and all that, figure out when I can get the renderings done. I mean, I think probably, probably not, because I'd want to come up here and do those things and give everyone enough time to digest. I mean, we're happy to come back here in February, kind of...
No, there's no need unless you have new information for us, so you'll have time to meet with, you know, the abutters that are interested.
If they're comfortable pushing to March.
Yeah. I'm fine with that, and in the meantime, we'll schedule some stuff here and get some more collateral done, and then hopefully by March, we can come back with, you know, with most or all of these questions answered, and, you know, a better, you know, fill in the gaps on the presentation, and, you know, see what we can do as far as, you know, addressing some of the issues that have been brought up.
That makes more sense.
Yes. Okay.
March 13th is your meeting date in March.
Okay.
So it's not the first week, but the second?
Okay. Do we want to set a time?
Yep, yep, you should.
6:45?
Do this early?
Well, that's what we did in this meeting. It didn't work out, but...
Yeah, we should do that as the first piece of business.
So you're hoping to continue the public hearing till Thursday, March 13th at 6:45? That meeting will be in room 103 of the Shattuck Street town offices.
So neighbors all take note?
And if the board would vote on...
Can I have a vote on that? All in favor?
So, as she said, we need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll see you March 13th. And if you have anything before then, if you want to run by the planning staff?
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, next is an update presentation from LePoli Companies about 550 King. I don't have a card. Do you want to just give me your number and I can get your information? Introduce yourself. We've seen you here before.
Thank you.
The other guy is new, so... Okay.
Good evening and Happy New Year. You may remember me, I'm Chris Ryan from THC Engineering. Tonight, I'm here joined by Morgan Pearson, the representative of LePoli Companies. It's been about, I think we were here in June, so it's been six or seven months since we last confronted you. And I think at those previous meetings, we had promised that as we progress and we have updates on the site, that we can come in front of you guys and respond to that and email all that. Keep those updates. Thanks, appreciate it. So that's where we're here. As promised, a little last, just the update, so... As we start to discuss some of the updates on the site, I just want you to know, kind of, as we develop the site, we've kind of divided it into two components. There's the infrastructure updates that are going on, and then there's the building updates that are going on. So tonight, we want to give you an update on infrastructure phase one and building phase one. You'll see the master plan in front of you, if you go to the next slide. This is the location of the infrastructure phase one that we've identified. Over the last six months, we've made progress in progressing this portion of the site. This has been identified as the piece of the site that we need to get some infrastructure in, so that we can support some of the building developments. This portion of the site includes roadway improvements, as well as some utility improvements. You can see just below the highlighted area, I show some lines, those represent rough area for water and sewer connection. Obviously, as we go through and develop each site, we need the infrastructure in place, including the roadways and the utilities, to support the various buildings. So since June, we've gotten funding in place for this section of the roadway. We've completed a design, and we've put that design out to bid, and actually, we are opening that bid tomorrow morning, so... So very exciting. We're making some progress. I know it hasn't looked, hasn't looked like it over the last six months, but there's been a lot of stuff going on behind the scenes. So we're excited to open those bids tomorrow, get a contractor underway, and we're hoping in just a few short months, this spring, maybe April, we'll have some shovels in the ground out there, and you'll see some, you'll start to see some progress. As we start on the infrastructure, this will unlock the ability to start to develop the parcels around it. And with that, I want to hand it over to Morgan to give you an update on the building phase one.
Thanks, Chris. Good evening, everyone. As Chris said, my name is Morgan Pearson. I'm the Senior Vice President of Real Estate and Development for the LePoli Companies. Some of you I've met before, but part of tonight was introducing myself, and I could be seeing more of myself and our team, our development team, and our construction team at LePoli, as we progress the design and the construction at 550 King Street. We're really excited to let you know that the first phase will be these two buildings that you see here outlined in red. Those amount to roughly 300 apartment units, and the intent is to be back before the board here in early spring, in the coming months, with some preliminary conceptual design plans for you to review. As Chris mentioned, that's going to coincide with the infrastructure work that sort of unlocks those parcels, allows us access to them, brings in the utilities, and helps us jumpstart that construction. The hope and dream right now, and we really think it's going to be a reality, is that at some point this year as well, we'll be back again to talk about what we're kind of calling Phase 1B, which is two commercial retail buildings outlined in blue here. Those we're really excited about will provide additional retail space. There's also retail space intended for the lower building there that looks kind of like a three, but this will be significantly more retail space and likely some restaurant, some restaurants going there, in there as well. The idea is to build a residential and at the same time deliver commercial space with it. So those are progressing right now. We've been busy working on those and the rest of the site, kind of tweaking it, making it work better over the past six months or so. But the real focus now is on these properties, we're hard at work on them, and look forward to being back in front of you in the near future this year, and starting construction this year as well on those first two buildings. More details to come on that, but we wanted to let you know that's what to expect. The other piece we wanted to update you on is, if you could go to the next slide, thanks a lot, is just some things we've heard in conversations over the past few months. The Yangtze River, the former Yangtze River Restaurant is scheduled to start demolition in the coming weeks. We're in for a demo permit on that with the town. You may have noticed if you've driven by, there's some fencing up around that, so that's a good sign of progress, that's helping to prep the site for future development and construction. We're also in the process of creating several signs to put across the property at different entrances, to give a bit more indication of what's to come. I think these will evolve over time as our renderings improve and as the plan is finalized in some of these buildings. But the next slide is a template for that. We're working with a sign designer, and it will probably evolve from this. I would also say that this year, our intent is also to go live with a project landing page that will help provide updates to the community on future construction and other plans, as we're able to update them and share them with the public. Not really a date set for that yet, but it's certainly an intent, and we would likely have a QR code on some of these signs, and make sure that people driving by can access that kind of information in the future. That's it for now, it's not a ton of information, but it was, we wanted to give the board a heads up and share that exciting news. Thank you very much.
Can you go back to the... Okay, well, actually, the one that you just had. I love this, by the way. Like a shocking, you don't realize what's there until you actually stand in the parking lot. So your first phase is roughly this. And so how are you accessing, you know, you'll do new infrastructure, are you utilizing existing roadways, or what, how does the existing, and also, what will you do with the rest of the parking lot that you're not obliterating?
Sure. What I would say, and you guys have a thought on that? No, well, Chris can speak to it a little bit. Two thoughts, two responses. One is, we're certainly going to have more and more in detail information for you when we come back. But I do want to give you some education now, which is, we will be minimizing disruption of parking wherever we can, so we can continue to use it for the businesses that we're looking, and we've already put into some of the site, and we look to do in the future. But Chris, if you want to talk about some of that, it's more than access.
Yeah, so when you see the infrastructure phase one in that roadway, it might look a little random, right? It's kind of a boulevard-style road in the middle of a parking lot. And the idea is there, there is that there is an existing site access in a roadway through this site, so...
So you will connect with those?
So we, yeah, the plan is to construct the new roadway, and we will, there'll be some sort of temporary condition between the new roadway and the existing site access road. Until we advance the infrastructure improvements in further phases, we will utilize the, it's in pretty good condition right now, you know, the roadway and the infrastructure passing through the site. So rather than rip that up now, let's utilize that to advance the other phases of the site.
And then the last time Rick was here, he was saying you were rethinking the parking structure. What is the latest on that for the, will you be reusing the existing parking for this 300 units, or? I don't know, I don't know where the parking structure was for the office building or the apartments, or, you know...
Right, so part of the work we've been, we've been conducting over the past six months is working to find a way to minimize or remove that structure there that's currently proposed. So I don't want to keep saying, but again, when we come back, where our plan is to better explain and describe those improvements, but I, hopefully that's, that concept's received well by the board, that we're trying to remove some of that parking garage, if not all of it, all together. It will be some surface parking and some other potential smaller, more minimized structure parking that will be built with likely with these two residential buildings.
What's going on with the two old IBM buildings? Are tenants proposed, or?
We do, yeah. We've, I'm not sure if you saw, we just had in October a 72,000 square foot tenant move in called Hyper Global. They're in now, very happy. It's a, it's a great company, they took a good chunk of one of the buildings, and we are probably in talks with almost half a dozen other different tenants looking to go into those buildings. We're focusing on the first building on the left, but if anyone came in and wants, you know, wants everything, of course, we're open to that. But we've been, we've been very pleased with the interest. I think, as you can imagine, some of that interest is based on the future development and the excitement around what the vision is here. So that's also motivating us to continue to proceed with all of this work.
Thank you. We had two selectmen here tonight. Can we talk about the Shattuck Street building disposition and how it might relate to this development? Well, I don't know. I mean, sound about.
Give us some insight.
How about I pose this question? I've heard a rumor...
Yeah. No, I mean, this is not, this is not a hearing, it's just...
No, no, I'm just to say, on the street, there's talk that, about something about the former Yangtze area and Shattuck Street, some kind of town hall thing. Somebody provide some clarity on what, what those discussions may be? And where we, if it is a thing, where are we adding that to us?
It's secret.
It is pretty much hearsay at this point, Chuck.
No, that's what I mean, so could you address the hearsay?
Sure. Chuck the coast, select work. Mark, feel free to jump in. Very early on, there was some discussion about the developer building a shell, as much of a shell as they could, to allow the town to create a town offices on this campus or this site. Wasn't my understanding that it was going to be done by the Yangtze site, because at that point in time, Yangtze wasn't part of the development. It was more down by where the B, just below where the proposed boutique hotel would potentially go.
By where the green space was, wasn't it?
Well, the green space is still going to be, it's going to be beside it.
Yeah, beside it.
So you have the hotel house, and then kind of next to it.
The bear returns.
So that is the, it wasn't a room, it was discussed, and there was some conversation about going out to bid for this property, and the potential existed that the developer could convert this into low-income housing, and if that were the case, then maybe there would be some opportunity to use the low-income, the extremely low-income housing that this building would provide towards the numbers for this development.
Which is why I brought it up, because it does sort of...
I'll add a little more. So, Mark Randauer, select work. We, as everyone knows, there's a senior center being built next door. We now own 36 King Street, Park and Rec, and the school department will be moving out of this building, so we are looking again at updating our space needs for this building and determining, you know, what we should be doing with this building. Nothing has been determined. We haven't even updated the space needs yet, but it is in, is in the works to see, like, at this point, I think the plan is to mop all half of this building, or a third of this building. But we are, you know, nothing's been decided, but we're still...
Great, okay. And I wouldn't have brought it up, except that it does relate to 550 King.
Sure.
Okay.
Any other rumors you got?
Yeah.
We won't put this in the newsletter, but at least it just puts it out in terms of what discussions are...
The three people that watch us will know about it.
Exactly. I have my archive.
Okay, we're...
Just one, just maybe one thing. Could you make sometimes an overlay of the existing property with where you're going to do construction on? Because I'm flipping between the two to see which road are you talking about, you know? I mean, I like this rendering because it's in context to the other part, but overlaying it on the existing parcel to show where you're going to be working would be helpful. You got it?
Yeah. So all of the plans that you have right now are working off this April 12th date? I just want to make sure that we're all talking off the same set of plans.
Yeah, yep, the, yes, the plan that we're working off of is, is looking at the various developments. As each development goes through, as we fine-tune all the details of each development, things are going to change and shift, and I'm not really exactly sure of the building dimensions of all of these. Those will get fine-tuned as we come in front of you for a site plan review. But yes, this, this is, you know, our master plan. None of the units have changed, you know, density scores, what it just, something like that, that's all.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that particularly the phasing one hasn't changed, and it doesn't look like it has.
No, no, still pretty, I think originally, we might have just identified every other site as phase one, and then let me come phase two up front, but we've kind of identified this corridor next to the surface improvements as all phase one to incorporate some of the residential and some of the commercial all at once. So I think, you know, there's some subtle changes, but overall, the same.
That's good, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much for coming in. We're always, we're always... We're always, we will always welcome you to a meeting to tell what's going on. But as I understand it, April is, or when is the next time we might hear from you?
Yeah, probably this spring, springtime. I know it's kind of broad, but yeah. April, a few months, we'll try to come in front of you.
So we won't hold you to a specific date, but we'll look forward to hearing from you.
Yeah, and you will see some construction going out there.
Okay, thank you.
In the next few months. Thank you, guys.
Okay, so that concludes our agenda, I believe. Can I hear a motion to... Adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.